Now Mark, we're gonna be going to, we're gonna be setting up the recycled water. We're gonna start doing some recycling water. I think the only thing you have to do, I haven't tested water before. Are you, turbidity is the, is one of the issues that we have. Are you familiar with the recycled water?
No, I mean, basically, your wa- your water is sufficiently treated. To, if you, if you spray it in a public area, it has to be checked for E coli data. And that would require... E coli samples have a very short shelf time. And so, it's difficult to take an E coli sample to the lab. Like, we have to leave from here and drive directly to the lab to get there with E coli. And you, we can't afford to do that every day. So you would have to set up a lab here where you could do that work. And we can do that at the wastewater plant. Uh, we do it for several other cities. And, uh, and run your own E coli. It's basically, you put a few drops of the water on, on a media and it determines or it doesn't.
We can use it for irrigation. We're probably gonna call it chill water, right? We would use, we can use it for irrigation.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if you, but if you're dating a public area, it has to be tested. Or if you spray it in a park. Or, like, my, my permeularity was, uh, in Gainesville when I worked there. We, we sprayed it on soccer fields across the road. And, and we had it tested. And, and you had to get approval prior to using it for whoever. Uh, we have to get approval from DC.
Well, and we appreciate it. I know, uh, you know, we've had to use, uh, David and, uh, some of the PAPs and the team to help us with our tank moves and redstructions and all that. We appreciate it.
We appreciate, need more for your help.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Alright, next, uh, discussion of the impact fee implementations. Got my name, but it's not gonna be me. Maybe this is Todd, right? Good guy. Alright, so we have the, uh... Uh, this is your power point, Scott, right?
Okay.
You have control.
Can you, uh...
Clicking?
Will we close that? Hit, uh, hit that button right there.
Is my show on?
Okay, it's working. Okay. So, wanted to come and give a, a brief rundown of what impact fees are and what the process is. It's, it's kind of a lengthy process that could be coming up. And the first step was just taken by setting the public hearing date for the adoption of the capital improvements plan and the land use assumption for the water and wastewater. So that's really the first step. But first, wanted to go over what are impact fees? Why are we doing this? And then kind of run through the steps and any questions that y'all have. Okay, so what they are? They are a one-time fee assessed or recovered infrastructure costs for, that are required for new development. Uh, they're governed by the Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 395. And basically, they're another funding tool for the town. So that the town doesn't have to take on additional debt to serve, uh, future, uh, future citizens of the town. Um, they provide normal growth of the community and they allow the town's funding combination that recognizes the benefit of growth. So, wanna talk about what's recoverable, what's not recoverable. So, the construction, planning, survey, um, any attorney fees in engineering are all recoverable. Land acquisition costs, capital improvement planning. So, what we're doing right now, an impact fee report, developing an impact fee is recoverable. Master planning is recoverable. Um, and any debt and interest is recoverable. And, and only town dollars. So if you have, um, a developer or a tech star or somebody that helps pay for something, that, that can't be included. So what is not recoverable? So, any capital improvements that are not identified in the capital improvements plan. So, what you guys will adopt in a little over a month from now? Only those projects will be recoverable by impact fees. And only that money that you can collect has to go to whatever those projects that are shown on that, that list. Um, operation and maintenance cost is not recoverable. Improvements to remedy existing deficiencies, um, administrative and operational, non-CIP debt service, and then non-town dollars. None of that can be included in your impact fees. So, gonna talk about the different components here briefly of what goes into impact fees. The service area, land use assumptions, the capital improvement plan, and the service units. So, the Texas Local Government Code ident, um, defines what your service area is. So your service area for your water and wastewater is defined by your ETJ, your extraterritorial jurisdiction. So, it's a little hard to see, but the yellow line here is your town limits. This purple line is your ETJ. So, you can potentially extend your impact fees out past the town limits to your ETJ. These are the current land use assumptions that we'll be discussing with C I, or, these are our post land use assumptions that will be discussed in C I A C. And the town will eventually need to adopt one way or the other. The yellow portion, we have planned for one dwelling unit or one house per acre. There is potential, um, for some development outside of your city limits to, um, to use your wastewater system. So, only the wastewater is what we're looking at here in the red. Um, we are assuming that these will develop at two lots per acre. And so, this helped us come with a, come up with our densities to make sure that we're planning your infrastructure, any wells or water lines, your treatment plan, expansion. We wanna make sure that we plan for any, any growth that's gonna come into the size of that, we'll wait.
And also, you can notice that now, existing lots don't, don't count. Empty lots in the town don't count. You get to do what you normally do. If nobody, you develop. So, if the empty lot next to you, if you own it, you wanna build one, you don't pay the impact fees. So, I'm sorry, can you just go back a little bit? So the six fifty-seven, that's for the entire, what region is six fifty-seven?
This, so these are assumptions that we're making on, right now, you've got two hundred nineteen connections. And we're asso- we're assuming that, what is that, uh, three and a half? Three?
Six fifty-seven?
Yes.
Yes, so two nineteen is...
Three four nine.
It's one, just one question.
You want to know? It's three, it's three one oh. Yeah, three. So we're assuming that's three versions per household.
Okay, so two nineteen we have existing and we're, yes, that by twenty twenty-six, three sixty-seven.
Right. So the assumption that we made is that this will be developed in the next ten years. That's another important distinction, that impact fees are only recoverable for a ten-year CIP window. So, with the pace of development that we're seeing right now, it, it wouldn't be unreasonable to think that this could develop in ten years.
But it's, the assumption is a full build-out in ten years.
Right.
But the requirement is five-year work and have to re-adopt it.
Exactly, right.
And, and re-adopt.
You take a look at a ten-year window, every five years, Chapter 395 requires that you re-adopt your impact fees. So you kind of, you know, we're kind of looking at a crystal ball here. So, the idea is you, you come back five years, you see how you did, and then you readjust and readjust your growth.
At least every five.
At least. You can do it more often if you want.
We can do it in two years, which if something happens out there and somebody brings us something that's devious from what we see, from what we thought.
Right.
We just roll the process again.
Right.
Is it physical process again, or is it abbreviated?
No, it would be the, well, no, it would be a little abbreviated. So, since the town doesn't have impact fees right now, you actually, you have to go through two public hearings. The first one, which we, which the town council just set the hearing for, is for the land use assumptions and the CIP. After that's adopted, we'll have, we'll have to come back for a second public hearing to adopt the, the impact fee and the maximum allowable impact fee. Next time, when you're updating it, you can amend the land use assumption, CIP, and impact fee all along the public hearing.
And essentially, all the work that's already been done, like the, the geological studies for a while.
Right.
We don't have to necessarily have to revisit that.
Right. Exactly. Like, you'll maybe go through C I A C again, you'll need to update this report, and then go back through the public hearing. So, it's a little abbreviated, but it'll, it's still a little tedious.
Just out of curiosity, Todd, how do they, how do they determine what is new development versus existing lots? Is it a size thing? Is it a density thing? What is it?
So, that will be written into the ordinance and most likely, it'll be based on plat date.
Yeah, we'll, we'll probably do a check on wherever utilities are, or if it's been platted already, so.
Okay.
Land plans, lot, land is, it's platted, right? There, you can go look up the plat.
Right.
It's not platted for lots.
Okay.
So that's really kind of the distinction. So, in your case, right, there's a lot next to you that whoever comes in and builds on that, they won't be subject to... Right, so the, the whole target of this is the land that is not developed today.
Right.
And so, the, the future residents have to, have to pay that burden of coming in and expanding the system.
Okay, so the town will have to make a decision, what we consider new development versus...
That's, that's, I think the decision's been made. I think it's more relieving that the, the decision's there, so somebody really comes back and says, no, we wanna...
So if there's a plat with existing utilities, it's grandfathered, and if there's nothing, if there's, if there's a plat with no utilities or no plat at all, then it's...
Many times it's not grandfathered, it's just not, it's not applied.
I'm just talking about, I mean, the town is perfectly sized for the lots we currently have.
Right.
The sewer plant can handle, we have seventy, about seventy empty lots in town, about sixty-five.
Okay, so water and sewer is good for, for existing lots?
For sixty-five more, we'd be in good shape.
Okay.
And the water would be a little tight, but we could do it.
Okay.
You know, the sewer, no problem, you'd like around eighty percent capacity, perfectly fine.
Yeah.
So, for the existing Lakewood villages here today, we'd be okay. It's all the new stuff.
Including water, T C Q qualifications and all that?
We don't count T C Q, but not on Lakewood Village style usage.
Okay.
We use four times or three times more than the average, you know, we use a lot of water.
Okay.
But I'm saying technically speaking, if you were designing the town and starting right now, we have two hundred and eighty-two houses potentially. You'd have a hundred thousand gallon sewer plant, you'd have three, I mean, we're right about where we need to be.
Okay.
It's just a development.
But the new wells, the new wells can only be, or at least we can only recruit the money. We can build as, as large a processing plant as we want, but we can only recover the money based on the connections in the new area, even if we wanted to use those facilities in the old area.
And it, and those kind of, and that's based on assumptions for what we think, how many houses would be built out there. So that's the importance of having to reevaluate every five years, that, hey, we think it's gonna be one acre lots out there. And maybe came out as two acre lots, well, that's fewer houses, so we're gonna reevaluate.
Yeah.
That's our last question. Can you just clarify, you know, the land area that's included only for wastewater, okay, the, it's obviously broken up with it. If, um, if you could just clarify why, but then what if the other areas become in play?
If the other areas come in play, then they will not be able to be included in the impact fees. There would most likely be, there will be capacity most likely for, for them to tie in, but you would not be able to assess them in impact fee.
So just out of curiosity, why, why is it broken up and why would we use it on the same?
So, this is, for the most part, vacant area. From what we understand, there's development that is interested in, in these areas. The remaining area, there's, there's houses on it.
I think that's what I was gonna say. The other area already has a house on it.
So a lot, a lot of those lots are for sale that aren't indicated? And, you know, when you talk to the agents, they'll say, it's a building on ten acres. Uh, if they were to, if we were to do this and not include them in, then we wouldn't be able to recover if they built.
Right.
But if they, if you build within that one area, so I guess my question is, maybe, I'm just making an answer, but why couldn't we just include the whole thing? And just to cover?
No, I, I think it's the same rule that we're applying inside the town in that it's already platted, it's already got a house on it. It's not really just open space.
I mean, I can tell you right now, there's a couple of those lots in there. And if, if the developer wants sewer, they know they're gonna have to annex it, that's part of the issue. The houses are already there. Could we make them get sewer? Yes, you could. You can make somebody get sewer, so you can do... Some guys may eventually, he's gonna have to, they're getting sewer. Who else is gonna come down and make them, tie into the sewer system, like it or not? We're not gonna make anybody on this side of the street tidy. If they already have a house there, they already got a roof it. We don't need the forty dollars a month. Now, if they wanna take one of those tents, split it into twenty-five houses or something, then we're gonna negotiate with them. You know, fee.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to do the impact fee, right?
No, but, but they have to come to us to get the sewer. They're not in our C C N, they're not in the year, they're not in, so...
If that...
It's like it is right now.
That, that address your question, Hannah?
Of course.
That would really be a decision for the town council and the C I A C on what they would wanna, it, it very well could be included.
I guess what I was thinking about again is if the bigger areas there, the ones that are undeveloped, or, or the ones, they're gonna go first. The guy that already has a house sitting there, there's potential, but if he does that, he's gotta come to us. And ask us, will you give me sewer or not? Because we're not committing to him to give him sewer. They have to come and ask. These guys here have already come to ask in the red. They're already asking for sewer. So we already know that's important.
Okay, so, so that's why it's drawn like that, then? Because those, those owners, those...
That developer, yeah.
They've come to us, they've said, we want sewer.
Yes.
So we're here trying to create an impact fee for those guys. If tomorrow somebody else came, we would, we might possibly include them in, or we'd like to. I know we can five years to reevaluate, but...
No, no, we can probably do it here.
Anytime.
Anytime we want. If, if there's a material change, we're gonna reevaluate.
Yes, as long as they don't start building on there, we can just, I mean, I'm...
And they can always come in, they just wouldn't be able to assess the impact fee. If they're not included in ours.
Yeah, this is, this is just if we can recover costs.
Right.
And we don't, sewer also is...
Right.
We're only gonna recover what we see that, it's not gonna recover over. It's, it's recoverable, which is my right.
Right, and that's part of it too. We don't wanna shoot for the moon and, and then take too much, and we know that no one over here is ever gonna come in. And then, then that just ends up with, that ends up diluting your impact fee costs and hurting. And then what, the town has to come up with the, the rest of the infrastructure, whatever that, that difference is, whatever. Because the impact fees, they're never gonna recover all of the cost. So, the town's gonna be responsible or the develop, some sort of development agreement to, to come to make that difference of. So what happens is if you include a bunch of other folks, then, then your impact fee per person is a lot lower. And if these folks never come in, then you're just, you're not collecting as much as, as you could be. You're gonna have to come up with the difference through most likely debt service. Okay? So, this is a brief, I don't wanna spend too much time on this. We're gonna come back, um, when we, when we have the full report, and you guys have a chance to look at the report. But this is a preliminary capital improvement plan. Um, everything in blue is your existing water lines. Um, this is your, your wells and your, your pump station right here. And then the yellow lines are what we're proposing to serve the undeveloped area. These are all eight-inch lines. Typically, we try to follow your thoroughfare plan. And then, we've identified a, a property down here that the town owns as a potential well site. Because these three wells that you currently have, it won't be enough to serve the rest of your, um, it won't be enough to serve all of this development. So you're gonna need a new well at some point. You could put one here, but it gets a little bit more tricky, because you already got three wells here, and so it's pretty tight. What happens is, you're drilling down a thousand feet or five hundred feet, you start, you know, that thing isn't straight down. And so it starts coming off of its axis. So you, you have to be a certain amount of distance away to make sure you don't run into one of your other wells, because no one really knows exactly where it is down there.
You get to a project with a problem also, right?
Right, exactly.
Two wells sucking from the same pot.
Not, that well study, you've already, it's already partially complete, right?
Right.
The G O's done, now you're just waiting for you guys to...
Right. And we, we did a well feasibility study, and that's basically, part of, part of that study has said that you can't put a well here. This is a more desirable location down here because of, we're talking about...
When do you think we'll see that?
Probably have that in about two weeks, right as we get...
So, just to clarify, so we just think that'd be a problem, right? And when we did that, did we announce that that was gonna be a possible well? And then I should give up there. I mean, have we told the, the people that there may be a well system there?
We don't know what we're gonna do yet. We're trying to acquire this lot next door, which is plumbed for a while, like a power plant. We're trying to go to Graham's Lot. That's what we've been planning for. So all this planning was to get the lot next to one that we ended up getting. It was a coincidence, the lot next door to one we've been planning. Falls out.
So the way the study is, is it's a potential site. Not growing well yet. The study's done, let's, don't, don't put a fourth well next to your three wells that you have. We can also put another site. That's a site that the town's, that owns the property, so that's...
There won't be any, there's no ground storage there. It's literally a well, it's two feet above like a doghouse. You wouldn't even see it.
Right, so this line here, we're proposing to pipe a well up to your gravity.
There's no tanks, nothing above ground, pretty much. Pretty well profiled.
Are we looking at any other exercises? There, there's wells all over there, right?
There's a well here, you know, three wells here.
Three there.
And then a decommissioned well here.
And then, you know, there's also...
Right, there's a little four gallon under there.
You have questions on that water? This is your wastewater CIP map. So all of the lines in red are existing gravity lines. The lines in... Oh, I'm sorry, the lines in red are your force mains.
Is that right? Sure, that's a dash line.
That's da, you know...
Hard to see on this one.
Yeah. It's hard to see. The main point of this, you've got gravity and lift stations, they all end up over here at your treatment plant. Where there's a lift station, then your treatment plant discharges into the light. The yellow lines are gravity lines that we're proposing, um, trying to use gravity lines as much as possible. We've got a little triangles here and here that are future lift stations. And then the dash white lines are the force mains. We're proposing to force that directly to, um, and then a gravity line to serve this development up here. So the idea is it all drains down here eventually, and then this is kind of a larger regional lift station for this whole area. And that force mains to your treatment plant.
Now, let me, let me point something out there. This is an impact fee study. But in order to calculate the impact fees, you have to design the build-out of the city. Where's the water and sewer gonna go from all that land out there? We've never had that before. The developer comes in, they only have to do what their property is. They don't have to oversize and think about all their neighbors up the street. So, part of this impact fee is, for the first time ever in the town's history, we now have an integrated plan for all of our developed land. What size water mains, where they're gonna go, the sewer, how's it gonna be designed, where the lift stations are. That's what's key. Nobody ever planned for any of that out there. They were always, you know, the town just kinda said, well, when the government comes in, they'll just do whatever. Well, developers are only gonna work on their own piece of property. If you don't show an integrated plan, it's like you do in your house, and you're saying, I'm just gonna put the sewer in front of my own house, then stop. You, you gotta put in the whole street. You can't just put in your little area and then stop. Well, until now, we never had a plan to tell the developers. So, land plan now knows, you've got a lot of land to your west, you're gonna have to oversize. The lift station for that whole area is going on your property. Land plan, you get the big lift station, you know, that's where it's gonna go. It's all engineered. So, a lot of this, yes, a fee is nice to collect the fee, but whether or not anybody develops or not, we can put that on the shelf. And we have a water and a sewer plan for everywhere on both sides of the street already set aside. We're good. So that's a key takeaway from this whole thing. Because we've now mastered plan all the infrastructure for the rest of the town. We never had that before. We never did bother to look at it before. No one's ever done. Okay, Tom?
Okay. So, yeah, so that, these are the majority of your projects right here that end up going into your impact fee calculations. So, that's really all I wanted to talk about, just to kinda give you a brief rundown. We'll, we'll come back and get much more detail on what your maximum allowable impact fee is. We can go through how we came up with the cost for all these projects. Really, we need to get through approving the CIP, make sure everyone's on the same page with capital improvement plan and the land use assumptions. And then we'll come back and present the full report. And it'll be a much more detailed presentation on how we came up with the numbers and what the next F R. But a lot of folks wanna see, you know, a lot of, a lot of cities are doing impact fees. So, most people like to see what are other areas charging for impact fees? Um, because a lot of times, they, they wanna be kind of on the same level as their neighbors. Um, that really all, well, the council will decide how that needs to happen, but this is a list, so you can see it ranges quite a lot from seven hundred and fifty dollars all the way up to eight thousand dollars. And this is for just water and wastewater for single family, um, residential. So, right now, here's a brief rundown of the schedule. We are doing a work session or a presentation where you've set the public hearing for the land use assumptions and the CIP. That is for, um, actually, uh, September twenty-second. The next meeting will be next week. We'll meet with the C I A C to go over the land use assumptions and the capital improvement plan. After that, they, um, we will publish the notice of the public hearing. That's just a, a step that's required in Chapter 395 of the Local Government Code. And then we'll have the public hearing where we can discuss, the town, council will decide if they want to approve or how they wanna proceed with the capital improvement plan and use land use assumptions. After that, we'll move into, we'll deliver the report. That, that includes any amendments or anything that happened to the CIP and L D A. We'll come back and give a presentation on the report and answer questions. And then we'll go through basically the whole process again of the C I A C and the public hearing on the impact fee. So really, the end goal that you're trying to get to is what is the maximum allowable recoverable impact fee? So in the end, you're gonna have a price for all those projects, what the, us as engineers estimate the construction cost to be. We're gonna divide that by the number of connections which come from the land use assumptions. And that is your price for your maximum allowable impact fee. Now, there's some other intricacies that go into that, but that's really what it all boils down to. And then, it will be up to the town council. The report will say, this is the maximum that you can, let's say it's ten thousand dollars, just for an even number. This is the maximum that you can assess for water. And then it will be up to the town council to decide, do they wanna go all the way up to the maximum? Or you can do anywhere, or you can do zero, or you can make it five thousand, you can make it anywhere in between.
And that, that's on a preferred development basis.
Right. And then, that would be in ordinance. And then that, you can change that whenever you want through ordinance. You don't have to go through a public hearing or anything, as long as it's at or below the maximum allowable impact fee.
So, so the number is ten thousand dollars. We pass an ordinance where the city council says, we're coming with eight. We don't wanna go above eight. Eight is the max we're willing to do, let's say. Now, each developer walks in the door, you can make a deal. Say, what are you gonna do for us? Okay, if you do this, that, the other thing, it's not eight anymore, it's three. You can trade off. You make part of a developer agreement is you trade that off. That's what cities do. So that's what other cities do. When they wanna attract builders, they turn that dial down. And they say, well, you know, technically, it's six thousand. We'll give you eighty percent off if you agree to build these two thousand houses in our city. And they dial it down. That's part of Texas. It's dog eat dog out there. Cities compete on this impact fee. They lower it down, trying to get the builders to come in. And it's very, very attractive. But who pays the eighty percent? The existing... City. All the existing residents, they have to pay more. No L is gonna do a, probably a ten million dollar bond issue at the end of the year for water sewer. Have to expand it. That's, that's how impact fees work. It's another dial and can turn.
Which is why a lot of councils and a lot of folks wanna see this, because they, you know, it's, again, let's say it's ten thousand, they say, okay, well, where are... Well, Frisco's at thirty-three hundred, let's try and be somewhere near Frisco. And that's where the council can decide. What is the last town? This one down here? The highest. Oh, that's Flower Mount? Flower.
Yeah, we just wanna know which one that's for.
And, and this, a lot of these towns also have real play impact fees. We're not doing real play, so a lot of these numbers are actually a little higher. But just for comparison, I wanted to show you a lot of this water.
Alright, so this is, just to kind of reiterate, Mark, it's the same as, let's say all that infrastructure you were just talking about costs a lot. Give me a...
Seven million.
Seven million.
So it's seven million dollars, they're building out. And we all agree it's being designed, it makes sense, that's all. We apply whatever, ten thousand dollar impact fee, we could say, if all the lots built out, times ten thousand dollars would equal seven million dollars. So in theory, you can recover all your money. Is that right? No. So, from your here from here, so, seven million dollars, you have just picked a number, seven million dollars, your debt fee would be X.
So, there's another calculation that goes into that where you have, you can do a detailed financial analysis to look at your actuarial and taxes, and we actually have an accountant on board to do that. And you deduct that money so that they're not paying for taxes and things like that. And you get a residency data to help with that.
If the purpose is for...
So that they're not paying for taxes, they're only paying for the debt and the...
If you do that study, you can recover more.
If you do that study, so what I'm trying to get to is you get this number, seven million dollars. What the law allows is you can do a detailed financial analysis or just take half of that number. And so, what we're proposing to do is to take half of that number. So, three point five million, and then you take that three point five and divide it by the land use assumption numbers that we have. So, the maximum that you'll ever be able to recover, if you recover every single one, will only be fifty percent.
Yeah, so fifty percent of seven million.
Fifty percent of whatever the number is.
Yeah, so, yeah, seven million, two million, whatever, but, so fifty percent of seven million is...
Three and a half.
That gets spread across the existing town, one way or another, right? I mean, we've got to build it, right? One way or the other, we've got to build it now.
So what, that just, then the debt, so if this town were to have to build everything, then the debt that the town has to take on is only three and a half instead of seven?
No, not really, because, here, look, let's clarify, okay? So it costs seven point two million, our share of that is three point six million. Land plan comes in, okay? Land plan isn't the other three point six million, they're only a fraction, they're only forty-nine houses out of that. So their portion of the three point six million from the developer side is only a quarter of it. Three quarters of it is other developers. So that means they're only going to pay nine hundred thousand dollars out of seven million. We have to play banker. You can't build a quarter of a well. You can't only drill the well a hundred feet and stop and wait for the next five developers to come in. Somebody has to play banker, somebody's got to put the money out upfront and then get reimbursed later. That's the problem.
And that's the importance of it, is that we get some like that, as opposed to nothing.
So, yeah, it's great, the guy that's, you know, way over there that develops in ten years, they're going to give us some impact fees. But the water, you know, we can't build one wall on four, at the sewer plant, we've got to build all four walls. We've got to build all the pieces, we've got to build the entire brand-new plant when we hit a certain number.